Okay, thanks, Garen. Good afternoon to the Winnebago Tribe of Nebraska. Thank you Tribal Council for joining us for the Winnebago Tribal Council Meeting. This is the regular Tribal Council Meeting that has been rescheduled from our January 4th meeting. I'd like to just wish everyone a Happy New Year. I think that I just want to express continued condolences to our mourners in our community. We've had great loss recently. We've lost matriarchs in our community and and I just think that that there's hardship all around and I just want to acknowledge that as we start this new year that we'd be thinking of our families, we'd be thinking of our relatives, our friends, all those that might need a prayer, might need some uplifting and that we'd be thinking in that way as we start this new year to love one another. And I just want to say those words because that's what's kind of been on my mind and feeling that if I if I can be a better person, be a better leader, you know, that I can only help my people more. So I'm, you know, owning owning those and want to put it out there that that's what's in my heart. With that, I'd like to ask Louis to give us a prayer. We're going to call this meeting to order at 1:14 or excuse me, 1:04. Louis, would you please say a prayer for us? Can you hear us, Louis?
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Hi, is Louis' line muted? Louis, can you hear us? I don't think Louis has audio. Okay, while Louis gets connected, Lorelei, would you mind saying a prayer for us?
Yes, I'm going to offer my prayer in my own mind and my spirit. So just bear with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorelei. Council, we have an agenda that has been sent by email and also put in the back boxes. Do we have any additions to this agenda? Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
A motion to approve.
The motion from Eric. Do we have a second?
John, a second.
We have a second. We got a second from Rona. Is there any discussion? Objection to the motion? Motion carried. 7-0-0. Our first order of business is under the minutes. We have the 12:28, 20 mid-monthly council meetings. Is there a motion to approve the December 28th minutes?
Motion to approve.
John, do you want a second? Rona motioned.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Rona. We have a second from John for the December 28th, 20 minutes. Is there any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried 7-0-0. 12:29, 20 general council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, John. Is there a second? Thank you, Rona. We have a motion by John or second by, excuse me, have a motion by John or second by Rona for the general council minutes of 12:29, 20. Is there any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried 7-0-0. Our third set of minutes are the December 30th, 2020 treasures report minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by John. Eric, would you like a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's for the 12:30 treasures report. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried 7-0-0. Council, we have seven ratified, we need to ratify seven five signatures and membership. We had to postpone our meeting and some of this business were needed to be done timely. And so for that matter, we did five signature approvals and we will be ratifying those right now. The first one is adopt resolution 21-48 approving Frank Palmer Schein independent contractor agreement for judicial services. There's a motion to is there a motion?
Motion to ratify.
We have a motion by John. We have a second from Coley. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Garen. Can you check with Louis? I just want to make sure he's responsive and he's agreeing to these motions. We had some technical difficulties on our end. So Louis, can you hear us?
I I don't think he can because I asked Louis to pray and he wasn't able to. I don't think he heard me.
Right, we 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 sent Brandon to to check on him, but he said everything looks good on the desktop part. I don't know if his plugin to his headphones is all the way in. Louis, can you hear us? Give us a nod or? Okay, we we will keep checking on on him. We'll probably call his house to see if that's the issue.
I just got a text from Anita and she said that Brandon is working on getting audio for Louis. So we'll just proceed and then we won't count the votes until we know Louis' vote until we know. I guess we can check on those first motions, but as we move forward, we will we'll just count six votes until Louis can figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any objection to the motion? I'm going to count 7-0-0 unless Louis objects. Our second is adopt resolution 21-49 approving James Botford independent contract agreement for judicial services. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Rona. Do we have a second? A second by Eric. 21-49. Is there any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried 7-0-0. Number three, adopt resolution 21-50 approving Melissa Ostman independent contract agreement for legal services. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Coley. Thank you. Do we have a second? Second from Rona. Thank you. Louis, are you, can you hear us now? No, okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion for 21-50? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried. Or adopt resolution 21-50 approving Robert Clinton independent contractor agreement for judicial services. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Coley. Is there a second? Second from John. 21-51. Is there any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion. Okay, John?
Just for the tribal members so that they know that this was for, one was for representation for child support services and others for the Winnebago Supreme Court.
Thank you, John. Is there any, is there an objection to the motion? No objections. Motion carried. Number five, authorize facilities to go to the Ho-Chunk Center and make the building entrance usable and authorize the family of RK to use it for their wake and burial services for their loved one. Is there a motion to adopt? Excuse me, ratify.
Motion to ratify.
Thank you, John. Does we have a second? We have a second from Rona. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried. Number six, approve budget modification for maintenance and repairs in the amount of $7,500 for the wake and burial. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a second from Louis. Good one. Discussion.
Madam Chair, the motion was made by, was that Coley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded in by Louis. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried 7-0-0. Louis, now that you can hear us, I counted you in the votes to approve those five signature ratifications. Are you okay with that? Okay, okay, thanks. Number seven, approve to submit application for receipt of emergency rental assistance payment from US Department of Treasury. This was an application that we we submitted or excuse me, the WHDC submitted and we were supportive of that. And in the next round of relief funding, there was emergency rental assistance. And so we're going after that from our our hut housing entity and and hope that we get awarded. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion to ratify.
We got a motion by Louis. You want a second? John, snowball. Discussion. Any objection to the motion? Motion carried 7-0-0.
Tori Bryan's on.
Oh, he is?
He just can't get his video going.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
I see his name on the list, yeah.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yes.
Did you vote on that last one? Or when did you join us? I I wasn't counting you. I'm sorry.
Only about two minutes.
Okay, so we got you on the vote for the rental assistance 8-0-0. Under new business, we have Kurt Lyons, air quality specialist from the Winnebago Tribe EPD Department. And he's going to speak to us about the January radon awareness. Hi, Kurt. Thanks for joining us.
Hello.
So welcome to the meeting. Turn the floor over to you.
I have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation ready. Can I get control?
Can we have Kurt share his screen, please?
Yes. Screw this up. This is my first time doing it, so.
Louis, you want to mute mute your line? Okay. All right, Kurt, you ready to go? We do see your screen, Kurt. It says EPD Air Program is limited. We see a Word document open. Is that what you needed?
No.
Okay.
There we go. So this is not what I expected. Let's see. I wasn't given the choice of what monitor I wanted to share. Okay. On the left-hand side. Okay, and there we go. All right, it's a little backwards, but.
Thank you, Garen.
Thank you. So, well, hello. First, I want to thank the Tribal Council for this opportunity to speak to you all today. As you may already know, January is radon awareness month. My name is Kurt Lyons and I'm the air quality specialist with the Environmental Protection Department for the Winnebago Tribe. In this presentation, we'll talk about what radon is, where it comes from, how it's dangerous to our health, what our risks are, and how to test for it. There will be a short video at the end. And after that, be open for questions. So what is radon? Radon is a radioactive gas found in soil and rocks in many parts of the United States. If there is radon gas in the ground, it can seep up into your building or home. And it's not detectable by the human senses, so you can't see, taste, or smell it. So how does radon get in your building or home? Typically, radon enters your home through any cracks in its foundation, any four fixtures around pipes and drains, anywhere that there's a gap in the slab. Once it gets in, it can get trapped and accumulate inside. Homes and buildings usually have ventilation, air ducts, exhaust fans, even an open window that can cause pressure differences that draw in radon from the surrounding soil. This is called infiltration. So your home can actually act like a sieve or a siphon, excuse me, siphon. So where does radon come from? And hopefully you can see my cursor here. Radon is formed naturally through the decay of an element called radium, which is a silver-like metal. The term decay means that the element is atomically unstable and it's throwing off particles of itself. This is what it means to be radioactive. Radon emits a particle known as an alpha particle. Thankfully, alpha particles are the least dangerous form of particle radiation. It doesn't take much to shield against alpha particles. Even a piece of paper will stop an alpha particle. But once it's in the air, it's difficult to protect yourself since it can't be filtered. The radioactive decay of radon is also how we're able to detect its presence. So from this chart here, you can see that it all starts with uranium. And it's a slow process where uranium wants to decay into lead. That takes about 2.4 billion years for uranium to decay into something called thorium. And it takes about seven and a half million years for half of thorium to decay into radium. And it takes about 1,600 years for radium, half that amount, to decay into radon. And interestingly, radon has a half-life of three point, between three and four days. Or half of that turns into something called polonium. And polonium has a half-life of three minutes. And that's not on the chart here, but that turns into something called bismuth. And then radioactive lead 214, and then finally a stable lead. I skipped a lot of, lot of detail here, but I wanted to give you a perspective of how radon is formed in the ground. So I've seen literature where it says radon comes from uranium and that's true, but it's more true to say that radon comes from radium. So how do we detect radon? Radon levels are measured in what's called picocuries per liter. This is a measure of how many alpha particles there are per liter of air. So if you cut a two-liter Coke bottle in half, that's about the volume that we're talking about. The higher the level, the greater the risk from long-term exposure. If radon comes up through the ground outside, then it's, it becomes diluted in the atmosphere and it's not a health risk. It's just a trace element at that point. So radon outside isn't going to harm you. But if it gets trapped in your home, that's when radon becomes an issue. The EPA recommends that you take action to reduce radon levels if your home or building tests at four picocuries per liter or greater. So are we at risk? Looking at the map of the United States, we can see that the expected radon levels, what they are in each state. This map of the 48 states is broken down into red, yellow, and green zones. And the red zones represent states that average greater than four picocuries. And the yellow zones are states that the testing averaged three, two to 3.9 picocuries. And the green are less than two or less picocuries. Now, looking at Nebraska. There we go. We see the zones by county. And just like the US map, Nebraska is also divided into yellow, red, yellow, and green zones. And the red areas mean the exact same thing. They're areas that average higher than four picocuries per liter. Now, if we focus down to Thurston County, we can see the average indoor radon levels have been 8.7. Now, this doesn't mean that all homes will be 8.7 picocuries, but you really can't tell what a home's radon level will be unless you test for it. Yeah, you could test one home and get 20 picocuries in the house next door. My only test to be one. You just don't know until you test. But the map is good for giving us a statistical expectation based off total averages of tests that are reported in each county. So how does radon even harm us? When we breathe in radon gas, it enters our lungs. And radon is emitting those alpha particles, which can do damage to surrounding lung texture. Constant exposure to radon over many, many years can increase the chance of getting lung cancer depending on how much radon is in your home and how much time you spend in your home. Studies show that radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer behind cigarette smoking. So if you're a smoker or a former smoker, the risk of getting lung cancer from radon is even greater. So what are the risks? In this chart here shows the probability of getting lung cancer as a nonsmoker. If 1,000 people who never smoked at all were exposed to radon levels of four picocuries per liter over many decades, the odds are seven in 1,000 of getting lung cancer, which is statistically the same odds as dying in a car crash. So how can we test for radon? Maybe familiar with some of these options. There are three standard types of radon tests. We have activated charcoal. We have E-perm, electric ion chamber, and continuous monitors. So let's take a look at each. First is activated charcoal method. There are several brands available out there on the market, but they all work pretty much the same way. They all come with instructions and it's recommended that you carefully read the instructions and not just go by what you hear today. These tests are meant to be performed in the lowest part of the home or building that gets used regularly. So it wouldn't be a crawl space or a seldomly-used basement. You want to test it where you where you reside. The canister is opened and left out for two to four days or whatever the instructions say to do. Then capped and packaged and mailed to the lab within six to 10 days of the test update in order to get a valid reading from the lab. The advantage of canisters is that they are relatively inexpensive. You can test many rooms at once. And they're, they're very accurate. But the disadvantages are that they're only short-term tests. You're only looking at a snapshot in time. So you can't see changes over time. Um, so you can't see changes over time. Uh, and it takes a few weeks to get the results back from the lab. So you're looking at, you know, three weeks uh, time investment. Next is, uh, electric ion chamber or E- perm. Um, and they're good for either long or short-term tests. They, they come, um, pre-charged and have a chamber that has a charged, uh, Teflon disc inside that creates a magnetic field. As the, uh, alpha particles from the radon strike the disc, the voltage drops. So the voltage is, uh, read before and after the test and it's that difference that tells you how much radon is in the air. This is the canister here. You would, uh, check the voltage, open it up, conduct your test, and when you're done, you would close it. And then, uh, this is the reader over here, this, uh, silver rectangular. The advantages of E- perm is that they're, uh, good for short or long-term tests and they're reusable. They give fast and accurate data, so there's no lab wait time, which is the biggest advantage. Some disadvantages are that they're, they do need maintenance. Uh, they're delicate, so if you drop one, you can break it. Um, and you need, uh, to, to, um, factor in, uh, temperature when you're testing. So you want, uh, the, the temperature to be the same, relatively the same between the time you start and the time you end. And, um, and you can't recharge them yourself. You have to have them sent out. It costs about 30 bucks. Finally, there's a continuous radon, uh, monitors. Cost of the, really come down, but it's still the most expensive way of, um, testing for radon. Continuous monitors operate over time and can show changes in radon levels. So you are, you're able to see peaks and valleys with, uh, changes in the seasons, changes in temperature and barometric pressure and so on. They, uh, operate by continually, um, reading alpha particles that strike a reusable electronic film plate. And the data is, uh, continually, uh, collected and stored. And it'll give you data over time. The main advantages of continuous monitors are that they're good for long or short-term tests and they have good precision. Can track, uh, radon levels down to the hour um, with immediate results by using the software that's provided. And you can tell if there is any, uh, tampering of the device. The disadvantages are that they're higher price, uh, but they're getting better with some brands, uh, running about $150. You can only test one room at a time with one monitor. And it requires some, uh, training for the user and if, uh, and there's some calibration required. So we come to, uh, a short video, um, about five minutes and 37 seconds. Uh, gives you an example of how to conduct, uh, charcoal canister test at home.
This instructional video will guide you through the process of completing a scrutin radon test. Start out by reading the contents of the box. Your test kit will include a charcoal radon sampler, a test information sheet, instructions and a return mailer. Do not open the plastic bag containing the charcoal radon sampler until you are ready for the test to begin. For best results, make sure to read through the instructions before starting the test. This way you can avoid making common mistakes that might lead to an error result on your test report. For the most accurate result, you will need to observe closed house conditions. This means keeping all exterior doors and windows closed for at least 12 hours prior to the start of your test and keeping them closed for the duration. You may still enter and exit as you normally would, as well as run your heating and AC unit as usual. Next, fill out the top portion of the information sheet. If the testing address is different than the mailing address, you should list that on the bottom portion of the information sheet. Otherwise, you can leave that area blank. Don't forget to record your kit serial number. This information can be found on the white barcoded sticker on the clear tray portion of your sampler. It would also be a good idea to take a photo of the kit serial number as you will need this information if you need to contact us with questions regarding results. Now you can choose the best location to run the test. It is recommended that you test on the lowest inhabitable level of your home, which is typically the basement or ground floor. It is not advised to place the sampler in a crawl space or closet as these locations will not yield an accurate reading of your radon levels. Your sampler should be placed at least two to seven feet above the floor in an open area away from large objects that would impede airflow over the surface of the sampler, away from air vents, fans or direct sunlight, and finally in a place where it will remain undisturbed. Recommended places to conduct the test include the kitchen counter, the bedroom dresser, or the coffee table in the living room. Areas of high humidity should be avoided as the moisture can interfere with your sampler. Places that are not recommended to conduct your test include the bathroom, the fridge, or tucked inside of a drawer. You can view complete placing guidelines in the instructions. There are also some helpful tips on our website at drhomeair.com/FIQ and digital copies of the instructions can be found at drhomeair.com/instructions. Once you have read all of the instructions and determined where you will place the sampler, you are ready to begin testing. Now you can finally open the plastic bag, remove the sampler and place the paper signed up in your selected testing location. Be sure to note the time and date that your test began on your information sheet. Your sampler can be exposed anywhere from 48 to 96 hours, which is two to four days. 48 hours is the absolute minimum exposure time in order to yield a result. When you are ready to stop the test, make sure to note the stop time and date on your information sheet. If you complete any missing information, such as the test location, include your payment information if there are any fees associated with your test. These will only apply if you are conducting your test anywhere in Canada, you are testing in the state of New Jersey, which requires a state regulatory fee, or if you are requesting lab rush service. You can provide your credit card information on the form, include cash or check inside of the mailer or pay online with our new online registration feature at drhomeair.com/register. Be sure to write your kit serial number and return address on the outside of your return mailer and mark the box for rush if you're requesting lab rush service. Please note that if the box is not checked on the outside of the mailer, it will incur delays in the analysis process. Take your completed information sheet, sampler and form of payment if available and place them inside of the return mailer. Make sure the mailer is thoroughly sealed in order to officially start the test. If you would like, you can apply tape to the closure for added protection. Your test will need to be mailed immediately to the address listed on your return mailer. If you did more than one test, we recommend that you ship them together in the same box to ensure that they arrive at the same time. Please note that it is important that each sampler be sealed in their individual mailers first to prevent cross-contamination and therefore error reports. We need to receive your sampler within 10 days of the stop date in order to get a valid result. We recommend shipping with FedEx or UPS using expedited shipping that includes tracking. First-class mail through USPS is the slowest form of shipping and has no guarantees through either USPS or Alpha Energy Lab and is therefore not recommended. If you are testing for something important and tons and tons such as a real estate transaction, we strongly recommend expedited shipping and clearly mark on the mailer for lab rush service. Once we have received your sampler and completed the analysis, we will send you a report. Completed reports are also available online at drhomeair.com/results.
Okay. That, uh, is the conclusion to my presentation. Um, is there any questions?
Um, Kurt, thank you for sharing that presentation with the council and the membership. Um, you've noted, it's noted in the agenda and we, we had said that January is radon awareness month. So, um, thank you for putting that together. I, that was a great overview. Um, I've never um, realized that we're in such a hotspot just geographically in the country and also, um, just in our, our county. So, um, with that, those three tests that you, that were in the presentation, what's, what's available to our tribal members, um, through your program or through their own resource? What should a family do if they think they have radon or how often should we be testing? Can you talk about, um, kind of on the ground, what's realistic for one that wants to maybe check their radon levels?
Well, uh, the first part, um, the air program is pretty new. Um, so I'm kind of limited in my capacity. I have, uh, reached out within the community to see if there are other, um, entities that have, uh, grant funds available or the capacity to test. And, um, I, I heard back from, um, the Winnebago Public Health Department and they do have, testing kits available. So, uh, I guess the, the first step would be if you're, you know, if you want to know what, um, you know, what, what your home level is, you would need to test for it. And the cheapest way is, uh, using the charcoal method that I explained in presentation and then, um, then if you, if you do test high, it's, uh, advised that, uh, you do a, a second test just in case, just to kind of, uh, double check that you didn't get a false positive. And then if you, uh, um, get a, a similar result back, then, um, the next step would be mitigation. There are, uh, things available to, um, depressurize, um, areas around the house to channel radon away, um, up through a stack uh, and vent it out into the atmosphere. At this point, uh, I, I'm not at that level. Um, I'm operating under, uh, Clean Air Act 103 grant and that is limiting me to, uh, just outreach and education at this point. So, uh, growing that, uh, would be what we might want to look at doing. But right now it'd be a DIY thing.
Okay. Well, I think, um, it's still beneficial that we have a program to educate, um, and at least start letting people know that, that is an issue and that based on that data, um, that it's cancerous if it's, uh, high levels over time. So, um, does the council have any questions? Lorelei is your hand up. Lorelei.
Um, I was just hoping that, uh, we would be fired up from his presentation to encourage our environmental program to go for some grants so that we could just see where we are as a community with this radon. I mean, community-wide. I was looking at those red lines. It's all across the northern United States, if you guys saw that. And we do have high cancer rates here amongst our people. And then the next step is if we find, um, high radon levels in our basements, what are we gonna do?
Thank you for that comment, Lorelei.
I guess, I, I mean, I'm happy to see us do something. Let's do something and let's really build it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorelei. Good comment. Louis and then Eric. Uh, we have to unmute Louis, please.
About 10 or 15 years ago, some department came around and they did a radon test in my house. And it came out clean. But something as simple as opening a vent or a door lets the air out will lower that level of radon. So it's not, it's not hard. You just have to be consistent in whatever you do, do to remedy it. But they've done it here in the past. I don't remember who, who it was.
Might have been somebody in the public health department, Louis, or maybe even that long ago could have been somebody in the EPD department. Um, well, good comments, council are, I have the same concern that Lorelei shared and, and if Louis knows that it's been done before, I, I know that right now in the pandemic, I don't know if it would be really practical to have, you know, people going into, um, homes trying to do this, but I would, I, I guess as a takeaway and, and an action item, um, Kurt, will you work with our public health department to identify some type of activity where we can do some of that during this month, just to kind of in the spirit of, um, radon month? I mean, I don't want to talk about it, be informed about it and then do nothing. Um, we have a lot of programs that we could partner with. I just, um, just offering that as a solution, putting it out on the table for discussion.
Yeah, um, I, we're working on, um, uh, work plans for, uh, for fiscal year 20, uh, 2022. And, um, developing a radon program, uh, i- is an option that we could, uh, do a survey possibly of, um, of homes and just see, um, but, uh, I, I can't do any mitigation. That would have to come from somewhere else at this point. I don't, my program isn't, um, it's not, uh, uh, as a 103 grant, I can't do mitigation at all. And you can test for it, but I'm afraid that if, uh, you test for it, then what? You know, if I can't. Uh, now there are options through other agencies that, you know, if we can get grants, uh, to mitigate it, then, uh, that, that would be a good option. Right now it's, it's kind of unseen, remains unseen what's available.
So I'm, I understand and what I'm hearing is that your grant deliverables are only going to allow you to do certain activities under your funding source.
Yes, unfortunately, that's where I'm at right now.
So, so what I was suggesting is that you partner with other, um, programs within our tribal entity so that, um, your wonderful information can, you know, inform the next step.
Yeah, that, 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 yeah, exactly. And, yeah, I could spread the word and another agency can, uh, do the, conduct the testing, that, yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Um, so Kurt and council, what I'm going to do is, and I'll make sure I CC the council on that. I'm just going to try to connect Kurt with to see if there's anything we can get done or maybe at least pass out some of these kits to, um, that might be available if they were before and just see where we can go. I, I don't want to, um, like I said, do nothing, but, um, just to, um, Eric, capture Eric's thoughts.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank you, Mr. Lyons, for being here today and bringing this information to us. You know, as, as, as many as death as there, as there is and, and the way our people are dying from this cancer in our, our area. I have a, I have a few questions, but I'll try to keep it short. What, what, what did that stand for again? L, L C P L? What was that? Leaders?
Yeah, it's, uh, picocuries per liter. Um, it, it comes from, uh, um, if you ever heard of Madame Curie, the, she, uh, basically discovered, uh, radiation. So it's named after her, um, uh, and then, uh, Pico is a unit of measure in the scientific realm. So i- it's low, it's low radioactivity. Uh, and that's why it takes, uh, a lot of it to, uh, to do, uh, damage to you. And it takes a lot of it over a long time. So, you know, walking into a room that has high radon levels probably isn't going to hurt you, you know? It's living in it day in and day out. It's the, the death by a thousand cuts, you know, a million cuts or a billion, whatever. That's, uh, that's the danger of radon. It's just, um, it's over time and a lot of it.
Okay. One of my questions was, um, is there a difference between a house with a, uh, with a basement and a house without a basement? Is there the, because I, I just, it seems like it would be, uh, with a, a house with a basement, it would, would just kind of go around the basement versus a house without a basement. It would just go into the, into the house, the structure.
Yeah, the, the thing about radon, um, and houses, uh, yeah. It, I don't have data on whether, um, there's less risk of a non-basement house, you know, or crawl space versus a basement. Um, but radon tends to, um, find any, any nooks and crannies to, to move up through. It, it's buoyant. So if it's in the ground, it's less buoyant and it wants to, uh, find its way up into the air. And as it's passing by, you know, rocks and whatever, you know, concrete slabs, it'll move around that and to try to get out. So kind of picture, uh, you know, like a bubble in a glass of water held upside down kind of thing, you know? But, um, yeah, if, uh, if it can get through the crawl space and I, I don't have data either way on that. I'd have to get back to you on that. Um,
Okay. Another, another question I had was, uh, a few years ago, a few years ago, not, not, not a couple of days, weeks or months, but years ago, I, I seen first, they were for sale, they were radon tests. They look like smoke alarms that you could put on your ceilings. And so with the L P C P Ls, um, it says that four wa- was where our limit was. And we were red in the United States and we're in the red in Nebraska. You, you know, the, if those, uh, would be good to to at least purchase and we could get those for our, uh, community members, that way they could put that in a house that will be kind of doing something for them. I, I think that'd just kind of be a, a cheap, easy measure to be proactive with that. You, you, can you tell us anything about those, those tests?
Well, I'm not exactly familiar with what you're talking about, but it's, it sounds like it's a continuous monitor um, where it's testing all the time. And they can look and see what it, what the levels are. Radon will ebb and flow with the seasons. Higher temperatures will, uh, uh, if you ever had, you know, a door in your house, uh, closed by itself, you know? Uh, that pressure difference, uh, causes that in the home. And, uh, during the summer months, it's, uh, it tends to be less, uh, than in the winter months. That's why radon mu- uh, uh, January is radon month. Um, because it's, it's cold. Um, but, uh, yeah, I don't know, uh, I would have to research to see what maybe that is that, uh, that you saw. Um, yeah, it's, it, it's viable if we can get the funds to do it.
Okay. Um, one of my last things is talking about, uh, money for those that the health department and, uh, housing, I, I don't know if they'd be able to combine their budgets to acquire some tests, maybe for like our low lying areas or certain types of houses that don't, might not have, um, basements or uh, just even a lot of, a lot of kids, a lot of children in there to, to categorize this somehow. Like I keep saying, to be proactive, that's kind of what I've heard already in the discussion here. So anyway, that, that's just my questions and, and my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Any more feedback or, or things that have come to mind? Okay. Well, um, I am, I already started crafting that email and Kurt, you really flagged some thoughts with us and, um, hopefully we can start that coordination to, um, just in this month and going forward have, look at building that program that you discussed or that there's, if there's opportunities to build a more robust program that, um, we use, I guess what we know and what we need and maybe this exercise reaching out to, um, so I, I'm writing this email and I was thinking of the public health department, Monica, Mona, Kurt, tribal council start. And Monica might have some good ideas on, um, on who she works with and her housing entity leads on how we could kind of just, you know, do the, do the legwork in the community. So those are my thoughts from your comments. Thelma?
Can we get, uh, our grant writers involved in this to be, uh, on a lookout for any?
I'll put Joy on there too.
I, uh, I spoke to Joy already and to see if there was anything out there. Um, and they, they look at it all the time actually and uh, right now it's kind of slim. Um, there's grants out there for, um, university work, but she didn't see anything unless it's changed in the last few days. I haven't talked to her, uh, in the last couple of days about that, but um, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Thanks, Kurt. And Thelma, I'll put Joy on there so that she knows that it's, um, it's one of council's priorities that we want to keep looking at this. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide my thoughts and, uh, I think a good place to start was with, uh, the Winnebago Housing Authority, the Inc. with their housing and the tribe's housing. And then the, the final group would probably just be homeowners. And looking at those, those three, uh, housing entities and seeing what they have going on for, they might already have, uh, radon testing and, and maybe this would just be, uh, a chance to strengthen that and, uh, reinforce it and bring it back up and, um, see, see where we're at with, uh, with all those entities and how they test.
Okay, John, I'll, I'll make sure I add, um, who I have contacts for in the C Cs so they know this discussion is underway. So thank you for that.
Sorry, I got one final ca- comment.
Yes.
Um, just, uh, Kurt, there, there's a few people that are chatting on, um, YouTube. They, they want to know where to go or how to get ahold of you, um, for additional questions.
Kurt, I, yeah, I, um, can put, it would be a good, uh, place to, uh, post that. You posted on the, on the, um, on the Facebook.
Yeah, you can send it to me.
Okay. All right.
Great. Uh, Eric, do you have another comment?
Yes, I, I, I think the last thing that I would like to say that just popped into my head is, you know, we're on, uh, quarantine, it's, it's, it's winter time and we have a lot of, a lot of people together at the, at this time. And I, I think it would just kind of make sense to expedite any, any proactive solution we come to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Coley.
Uh, I just want to say, Kurt, uh, thank you. Um, is it appropriate to say that you are building this program back up? We did have a program. And I want to say good luck to bring this program back up. Um, for things like this, you can help us, this program can help our tribal members, uh, figure out where we're at with this radon stuff. Be a good thing. So, uh, good luck and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, um, good discussion, Kurt. You really, um, thank you for sharing that information again and, um, watch for that email that I have you on just to, um, see if we can, I don't want to have a meeting, just have a meeting, but, um, perhaps we can get the right people together and we'll have a, a next step. So if there are no other questions, um, thank you, Kurt, again, and we will, um, follow up with you. Um, our next presenter is the tribal partner specialist with the U S Census Bureau. We have Shadana Sultan with us. I, I think I did, if I, I hope I'm saying the name correctly. If not, Shadana, are you still with us? I thought I saw your video.
Hi, uh, Chairwoman Kitchen. This is Shadana. Are you guys able to see me?
I'm not seeing you earlier. You might want to share your camera. I didn't, I saw you earlier.
Okay, let's see here. Yeah. And I do apologize. I've been working with, uh, Brandon here for maybe three weeks now trying to get this to work out. So, um, I ended up digging out an old laptop from storage just about 10 minutes ago to try to get this thing to work. Um, I, is that working yet?
We, we don't see your screen and we don't see you.
Okay, let's see here. I just switched it over to a backup camera. Uh, let's see if that works.
But it was working earlier because I did see you.
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
There we go.
Good afternoon, Shadana, Shadana.
You sound like banana. Yeah, that's probably the easiest way to remember. Shadana banana.
Shadana banana. Okay. Well, good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. Um, we, uh, the U S Census is always an important topic for tribal communities. Um, we definitely, value the partnership and, and working with you folks to best capture our numbers and know that these, these numbers, transpire to funding in our communities and, and I just want to make that pitch for the census as, as we always do when it's, when it's that time. So, um, thank you for being with us. Do you have your colleague here with you?
I do. Thank you for the opportunity.
Corlys, Corlys, all you guys, your cool names. Corlys.
Coralis, it's okay. Don't worry.
Welcome, ladies. Um, I'll just, um, like to introduce you to our tribal council and I'll turn the floor over to you for your presentation.
Lovely. Thank you again, Chairwoman, and thank you to the council. Thank you to all the attendees for allowing us the opportunity with you guys today. And as she mentioned, my name is Shadana Sultan. I am a member of the Okla La La Kata Nation. I'm currently serving as the tribal partnership specialist with the U S Census. Um, I'm based in Denver, Colorado, but, uh, my coverage zone is about eight states across the Denver Dallas region. Um, and that does include Nebraska and was recently assigned the Nebraska Outreach for Indian Country there, um, a couple of months ago. So it is still fairly new territory for me to cover, but I'm just thrilled and honored to have the opportunity to work with you guys. Um, complete side note, I'll turn it over to Coralis for her introduction as well here in just a second, but, um, total side note about Winnebago Tribe, one of my most endeared mentors that I worked with for almost a decade, um, was Dee St. Seer, who is Ho Chanka as well, and her nephew, Mr. Garen Coons is there as well. We're going to talk about some of the work that he did for the 2020 census here shortly, um, and had the opportunity to work with Lance Morgan. He came out and was a keynote address speaker, um, for my Indian Biz Expo that I used to host, uh, quite a few years ago through the Indian Chamber based out at Denver. So, um, Winnebago holds a special place in my heart. So, um, just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to join you. I'll turn it over to Coralis for her introduction and then we'll jump right into the presentation.
Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Coralis Ruiz. I am the tribal media specialist for the Census Bureau. I cover the 12 states that, uh, encompass our region, including the state of Nebraska. It's, it's an honor to be here with you guys and and serve Indian country in this position. I am, uh, born and raised Puerto Rican, but I am currently based in Utah, uh, serving everybody in, in, in our region. And as I said, it is a pleasure to be here with you guys and any questions and any concerns or, or ways that we can serve you, I am here for that. So I'll hand it over to Shadana so she can start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Coralis, and thank you, Lorelei. I think she stepped away from the screen here just for a second there. But thank you for the opportunity to share today's presentation. Um, unfortunately, again, it, it looks like the, um, I am unable to share my screen with the presentation. So, uh, Coralis, if you're able to do that.
Yes, I'm gonna try.
Okay.
Shadana, let me make her presenter.
Okay.
And we sent that invite.
Okay. Yeah, we tested her invite earlier today, um, to try to do it. And it was a attendee invite instead of a presenter. So, uh, the presenter went and worked on my, my other computers. So here we go. It looks like we're up and ready to go, guys. Okay. So we'll go ahead to the next screen here. Again, um, this is part of our thank you campaign. We wanted to offer you guys some um, updates about the 2020 census. We've gone through our introductions. We're going to take a look at the national recap and just some general information and then we'll drill down to a regional and tribal recap. We'll talk about what's next in 2021. And then, uh, we're going to talk about the data summits that are upcoming that are going to be extremely beneficial to, uh, Winnebago Tribe and especially your leadership and executive officers. Uh, and then we'll close that out with our thank you. So let's go ahead to the next slide. So just as a reminder, I'm sure, um, all of you guys already know this. I know, uh, Garen did a phenomenal job of doing some outreach and educating the community about the impact of the census. Um, as you guys are probably already aware, the census, um, really has an impact on all of the funding and resources that are making their way into the community over the next 10 years. So as an example, quite literally, um, your transportation director, your transportation budget, your, um, health services budget, your education budget, your public safety budget, any federal dollar that's making its way into your community is directly related to your census number. Um, so up until now, they've used the 2010 decennial census number and plugged it into a formula. And sometimes, for example, like with your transportation budget, it can be about 60% of that total budget. Um, and it, that manages how much money kids are getting, um, for those federal budgets. Uh, in addition to that, it also affects resources like vaccines and testing kits. Uh, when I joined earlier, was listening to you guys talk a little bit, um, I, I did, you know, hear the unfortunate news of, um, you know, how COVID is impacting your community there. So, um, the testing kits that you guys get, the vaccines that come down, all of that is directly related, uh, and managed by that census number. So, um, you can probably see how important and understand the impact that it has on your community. So we always try to do this outreach into Indian country to make everyone understand the impact that it has so that we get as much participation in the census. Um, there are a couple of acronyms. I just wanted you guys to be aware of us. We go through this information when we talk about self-response. Um, so you see there the national self-response. That's essentially where, uh, anyone picks up the phone and calls it in on their own, fills out a paper form or goes online to fill it out. So if they have initiated the response on their own, that's called a self-response. We're going to talk about what happens when people don't respond, um, and where that goes. Uh, but nationwide, the self-response rate was about 67%. That essentially is the best, uh, most rich data that we can get, and that's the preferred method of collection. Uh, we were projecting that we would probably get about 65% of the houses across the United States to self-respond. In 2010, we got about 66.5%. So we did bypass 2010 and what our expectations were, uh, for projection. This was the first time we were able to offer, um, self-response online through the internet. Uh, we had no downtime, it was open 24 hours a day, no data breaches. And it took most people about nine minutes to get through there. If there were smaller households, uh, like mine, you could get through there in about two to three minutes. So it was pretty quick. Uh, most of the people you see there did respond by internet. So we had about 79.86% percent of the people respond by internet. Let's go ahead to the next slide. So we just said 67% of the homes across the United States responded online. So what happened to the other 33%? Those 33% of households go under our operations called non-response follow-up, N R F U. Um, I always joke and tease people, census or any kind of federal agency, it's just an alphabet suit of acronyms. So if you happen to see that N R F U, that stands for non-response follow-up. So essentially if we sent the information out and did not get a response, um, the the Non-Response Follow-up is our largest, most expensive operation for census. This is where we have thousands of field enumerators that go out and visit homes to try to encourage a response. And so those 33% of homes that did not respond went under this Non-Response Follow-up. We covered about 64 million addresses in that operation in about 68 days. You can see there compared to 2010. We did more addresses in a shorter period of time. You can see there that Winnebago completed their field operations for NRFU by October the 5th. So of the homes that were under NRFU, we got to reach all of them by October the 5th. We wrapped up nationwide, all of our non-response efforts by October the 16th. And you can see there, we had about 24% of the houses in NRFU went under proxy. So what happens if the field enumerators are visiting the house and they don't get a response? And that happens. When I first came on board with Census, I said very directly to my supervisor, Mr. Amadeo Shahe, who is the Chair of the Intertribal People's Council there out of New Mexico. I said, "Amadeo, let's just be very honest with each other. In Indian country, if someone is knocking on my door, the way I was raised and I don't know them, chances are probably not going to answer that door. And if I do answer the door and they're asking me questions like, what is your date of birth? What is your race? How old is your husband? How old is your daughter?" I might just close the door. But you know, what are we going to do to try to get a response from that? So many of these houses were visited, visited multiple times to try to encourage a response. And some of them were visited up to 10 separate times to try to get a response. So if we couldn't get a response after the visits to the home, they would go under what's called a proxy. So a proxy means we would visit a neighbor to try to get that response. And I do often ask people to really think about your own situation and your own neighbor. Your neighbor probably doesn't know everyone's tribal affiliation in your household and everyone's date of birth, which is why you heard me say earlier, the self-response is the preferred method for us to collect data. This time around, we were, we got about 24.1% of the NRFU workload did go into proxy, which is about par for par what happened in 2010. And then as far as administrative records, we were projecting that we might have to use 22.5% of those households under administrative records, but we only did that on 13.9% this time around. Let's go ahead to the next slide. So we often get questions about our group, group quarters and our special operations. Looks like the numbers didn't populate there, but that's okay. For group quarters, that is essentially anywhere where they live in groups. So this essentially is apartment buildings, jails, dormitories, nursing homes, anywhere where people live in groups. The blue line there is the number for 2020 and the gray line there is the number that we collected in 2010. And I do apologize if those numbers are not populating there. We'll make sure that you guys get a copy of today's presentation so you can actually see those numbers. But the gist of that is you can see that in 2020, we did outpace the collections of partners that we worked with in 2020 versus 2010. We sometimes get questions about people experiencing homelessness and how are we able to collect for those? I just wanted everyone to know that we have some special operations like our targeted non-shelter outdoor location. That's also known as Tensol. Those are specially trained people that go out into the field, under bridges and parks, to really interact with that particular community to try to solicit responses from them as well. And you can see there, the blue line for 2020 did far outpace what we were able to collect in 2010. We also work with service-based enumerators. These are the soup kitchens and the homeless shelters that interact with that particular demographic. And again, we were able to outpace in 2020 versus 2010. So let's go ahead to the next slide. As a region, we had about 313 partnership specialists. Those are the people that do the job. Like Coralys and I, we're both partnership specialists. That includes tribal and media. 313 specialists across 13 states. We'll talk a little bit about the tribal team here in just a second. The field enumerators that were knocking on the doors, we hired about 48,000 of those. We had 50 area offices. As you guys are well aware, this particular year, we were dealing with some really special instances like wildfires, social unrest, pandemic. So that did require some pivoting to try to change our strategies. We had about 67,000 partners in the region and 1,261 complete count committees. Let's go ahead to the next slide. So looking at our tribal overview, again, we had about 15 partner specialists across the 12 states. So if you look at that map there to the right, that essentially is the Denver Dallas region. All 12 of those states make up our region. And we had 12 of us partnership specialists that were covering those zones. I can tell you, I was based out of Colorado and I covered Colorado, Utah, Wyoming and the Dallas Fort Worth area. Some of our states had multiple partnership specialists for the state of Nebraska. Your partnership specialist was Harmon Maples, was the point of contact for the Winnebago Tribe. As far as the self-response rate for tribal, for Indian country. So you do have to think about the self-response rate when we say, what is the self-response rate for Winnebago? We're talking about the houses actually on Winnebago tribal lands. That is the self-response rate for that. We'll talk a little bit about the numbers in a second. What about the Winnebago tribal members that live in Denver? When are those numbers going to come out? So the self-response rate for the houses on any tribal lands within our region was 38.7%. That was the average. And you can remember, we talked a little bit about nationwide, it was about 67%. So tribal and Indian country was very different than what we saw in the general market. I do like to remind people that that is due to historically how that collection was operated. In previous decennial censuses, many of our tribes were under what's called Update Enumerate. So essentially, that's when they drop the packet at the door. And as they drop the packet at the door, they are asking them to do the response with the Census Field Enumerator right there on the spot. Since that is an assisted response, that does not count for the self-response rate. This was the first time that we offered update leave and self-response to all of our tribal nations. And the tribal leaders made decisions whether they wanted to go under self-response. So the tribal NRFU, we had, we reached about 99.94% completion in NRFU across the region. We did have six tribes that did not reach 100%. Navajo Nations was by far the largest. They did get about 98%. There are about 1,000 outstanding homes still on their tribal lands. If you take the other five tribes that didn't reach 100% and combine all of their cases together, it was about 98 cases total outstanding on NRFU. So when are the numbers going to come out? That's the big question. The counts for all of the houses on Winnebago tribal lands, on any house, on any tribal land, will start to roll out as early as April this year. So if you want those numbers, and again, those numbers do have a direct impact on your funding and resources, that information is going to come out as early as April. The other number of off-tribal lands is expected to come out somewhere around 2023. It does take a couple of years. You can understand when people fill out their tribal affiliation, they might say Hochunka, they might say Winnebago, they might say La Kota, they might not say Okla La Su tribe. So depending on what they listed on that form, it does take a while for us to sort through those. So again, that does take a little bit more time for the off-tribal lands number. Those are the self-response rates of all of the tribes in Nebraska. You can see Iowa came in at 45.8%, Omaha at 48%, the Ponkla tribe at 100%. Just keeping in mind, it was only four houses on a .3 square mile radius. Four, I'm sorry, .3 square miles tribal land. So that's how they got to 100%. Sacan Fox at 57, Santee at 36, and then we have Winnebago coming in at 39.2%, which is a decent number, especially considering you guys did outpace the regional self-response average. Let's go, and if you look at the map to the right before we move on, I just wanted you to know the yellow states that are on that map. Those are the zones that I'll be covering moving forward. You may hear my colleague's name as well. His name is Charles Tipikonic. He's from the Comanche Nation. He's based in Oklahoma. He covers the green states on the map. We'll go ahead to the next slide. And just taking a look at all of the states within our region, you can see there that Nebraska actually was number one of all 12 states in our region for self-response. The state overall was number four in the country. So you guys did a phenomenal job overall throughout the community on the self-response rates. Let's go ahead to the next slide. I think this is the one we're gonna, yep. Talk about what's coming up in 2021. There we go. The projected release of the state population counts, we had projected we were going to come out with those numbers on December 31st. We were unable to reach that number, but we are trying to get as close to the statutory dates as possible. As we talked about earlier, the redistricting counts are starting to roll out here in 2021. We just wanted to remind everyone that we are doing post-enumeration survey, which is the quality assurance part of our collection. Essentially, we have officers out in the community or enumerators doing sample collection in random zones. They are essentially collecting the same data that was collected in the 2020 census and they're cross-matching that data. If it matches up, it gets a green seal of approval. If we have a lot of disparities and discrepancies, it may signal something that might need to do a redo in some of those areas. That operation is going to continue through October of this year. We do want to remind everyone that those operations are still ongoing and we have other surveys. We conduct about 130 surveys throughout the year. So you may still be getting people knocking on your door to try to encourage a response or getting things in the mail. And we just wanted people to know that those operations are still ongoing. Let's go ahead to the next slide. And those are some examples of other surveys that are ongoing. The Pulse Survey will be very helpful for you guys. If you're a Director of Health or your clinic people are on the line today or watching this, I would highly encourage you to go ahead and take a look at that Pulse Survey. It essentially is going to tell you about communities and how they're impacted and really at-risk factors for COVID. So if there was some type of vaccine rollout and you needed some support numbers for that, you can essentially see how many people in your community are over the age of 70. How many people within your community don't have access to transportation? So is this a mobile unit that you're looking at? So it has some really valuable information on there. Let's go ahead to the next slide. And before we go into the Data Disseminations Program, I'm so sorry about this, Coralys, it looks like that same thing as the last time this happened. The, the media slide is not in there where it should have been. So I'll turn it over to you. If you want to go ahead and talk about media before we go into data dissemination.
Fine, fine, don't worry. What I wanted to share about media is that during the decennial, we had 21 media specialists across the region and one of those was specifically serving Indian country. And we had over 2,000 partners, not only tribal outlets, but also general media outlets that were helping us with the 2020 census. And from, from those 2,000 partners, we almost had 4,000 commitments. And those commitments include blog posts, radio shows, interviews in TV stations, radio programs. I mean, all the things that our outlets did for us were amazing. Something that we accomplished also in our region was that general mass media outlets were interested in knowing how operations were being handled with Indian country. And we're so grateful also for, for all the outlets in tribal reservations that helped us so much during the decennial. And I wanted to share with you that we at the Census Bureau have a newsroom on our website. If you go to census.gov, you can click on Newsroom and in there you will get all the information, not only about the decennial, but also about all the surveys that we conduct every month. And you can also sign up for embargo press releases. So if you have anybody in, in your offices that is in charge of helping get the word out to the community through the radio station, newsletters, newspaper, or it's simply a person that shares the news with the community, they can embargo these press releases and they will get it usually two days before we release the information. There's no cost to this or anything like that. You just go in and sign up with your email. The only thing that we ask for those that embargoed our press releases is not to share the information before we share it with the public, but you can have that data before the public. So you can start working on the pieces that you're going to share with your audiences in your community. So just go to census.gov and as I said, there's no need to pay for this or anything like that. Just sign up and then you'll start getting the news and every information that we share with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Coralys. Thank you, thank you. As a reminder, once all of this information starts rolling out, we're going to do some localized training. So the first training that we'll, we'll do for, directly for Winnebago Tribe is our Data Summit. And that's offered to you guys completely free. It's essentially going to do an overview of all of the different census data tools. So you'll be able to see which data tools are pertinent to you. The type of people who probably should be in that training are all of your tribal council, your tribal elected officials, your appointed officials, any executive officer, so a Director of Education, Transportation. And then of course, I think I heard Laura Lai talking earlier about seeking grant funds. You definitely need your grant writers into that training. Essentially, it's going to walk you through how you can use various census data tools that are made available to you guys for free. The reason I encourage you to hopefully get your executive officers in the room, this is going to teach them how to extract the data. So if they need to go back and talk to a federal agency about their funding and resources, they have the resources to have some really informed discussions with those federal agencies. Just as a reminder, Census does not make any decisions on what people get for their funding and resources. We simply collect the data, but we want to make sure you are able to extract the data and utilize that to your benefit. So that particular training, we can do it virtually for you guys and we'll send information over. It'll probably be about two to three hours long. You'll also get some information about geography and electing your ambassadors. So there'll be a lot of information in that. On the screen there, you'll see the Data Dissemination Program. After that training, if you say, hey, we want some very specific information of how to handle certain extraction of data through the ACS. And are you guys hearing that ringing? I don't know if you're able to hear that. There's some ringing that's going on. It may just be my computer. But anyhow, if you want some more specific information of how to extract that data, we can do a DDS training that goes in some really granular detail. And the point of contact for that is Amadeo Shahe. I mentioned his name earlier. He was the Regional Partnership Coordinator for the Dallas Region. So all of the tribal specialists used to report to him. He is now back reporting to headquarters. We'll go ahead to the next slide. Now, this brings us to our fun part of our presentation and really the most important part of our presentation today. This is our thank you. We certainly understand the difficulty of undertaking the task to try to get your community on board to respond to the census. It would not have been able to happen without local support. And we specifically want to make sure that we honor and acknowledge the work of Mr. Garen Coons. I think he is on the line today. I got a little text message from here earlier that he was on the, are you still on the line there, Garen?
Yes, ma'am.
Lovely. So we want to say first off, thank you. And I wanted to acknowledge you in front of the tribal leadership, tribal council, so they understand as well all of the effort, the work, the energy that you put into helping your community to get counted. You helped Winnebago tribe stay ahead of the curve when it came to self-response rates. Hopefully, you got your certificate. We did send out a certificate similar to this one not long ago. So hopefully you got that one in the mail. It is a certificate of appreciation, acknowledging you for all of the work that you put in. As a reminder, guys, this is not something that he got paid to do. Obviously, something that he put a lot of energy and effort into to get the word out into the Winnebago community to make sure that they got on board with their self-response. And I just cannot stress enough how big of an impact that his personal efforts are going to have on your community over the next 10 years. So hopefully, when you see Garen, you give him a pat on the back and say, "Thank you." Garen, are there any words that you'd like to offer to the tribal leadership?
No, I just think that I appreciate the working with you and it's been a successful census. And I know that from the tribal leadership expressing to our membership that this year's census was vitally important. So I took that in the Communications Department and we tried to help any way we could. So it's been a pleasure to work with you and as well as your staff and thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Garen. And I got the notes from Mr. Harmon Maples there, who was the partnership specialist for the area. And he left some very positive notes there of his experience in working with you, Garen. So he is definitely giving you a recommendation to get a gold honoring today. So thank you again for all of your work. We'd also like to acknowledge and thank the tribal council and tribal leadership for all of your efforts and support into Indian country and specifically for Winnebago tribe. So thank you again. We'll go to that last slide there that will We'll go to that last slide there that will show the certificate of appreciation. So hopefully you guys have already received those in the mail. I think our first round went out around December the first. So and then we had another batch go out here just after the first of the year. That pretty much wraps up our presentation for today. Do we have any questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for that certificate. That's very nice. And also for acknowledging Garen and his efforts. He does a good job with his team and really getting the word out. We use social media quite a bit and use other methods such as our newspaper. Does the council have any questions or feedback for our presenters? Eric?
I'd just like to say thank you, ladies, for helping us get our numbers down and our population and the reservation found out. Look forward to the information that's going to be coming out here in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Nice hat.
Um, so the deadline has passed for people who didn't turn it in? That they can turn it in to their census or?
So yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. For the decennial, it has closed out. That closed out in October, but there are other ongoing surveys that happen every month. The Current Population Survey, the ACS. So this is why I say when we do that training, that data tools training, really good idea to get your executive officers and your tribal council in that training. Because we're going to teach you how to pull that information. And again, the majority of that's going to be around the decennial, but there will be backup surveys in there. So you can say, hey, the ACS data or according to the Current Population Survey, if you're going back to have some of these conversations with federal agencies or your grant writers are looking at that, we'll show you how to pull that information. So thank you for your question.
And when will that training be? I didn't capture that in my notes.
It's really up to you guys. You just let Coralise and I know we're hoping to start booking those, you know, here in February, late February, so we can start as early as February. We'll work around your schedules. We can do it virtually. If we get to a point where things are happening in person sometime between February and April, we're happy to fly out and be on site with you guys. But if you want a virtual training late February, you just let us know the date and time. We'll book it in and we'll make that training available to you. We just work around your schedule.
Okay, great. Will you work with our secretary, Decora, to identify when we can line that up? That sounds really interesting. And just for our own enrichment and knowledge, how we can better understand these numbers as we work through some of these discussions with our departments and leadership. I had one more follow-up question before council may have other questions. That was very impressive that Ponka Nation got 100%. You know, that is a goal and I was just, I guess, really taken back by that amongst the Nebraska tribes that they would really, really be successful. So I'm really proud of them and also want to see 100% for our community. So what can you share strategies or what's different about, you know, Ponka? I mean, to get like almost 70 more percent than some of the other Nebraska tribes?
Yep. So the self-response number for tribal lands or for Indian country is just the houses that are on the tribal lands. The other tribal affiliation number, which again will come out a little later, we don't have those numbers for that yet. But in saying that, so their response rate is for a smaller piece of land that they have. It's a really small piece of land and it's a smaller amount of houses that they have on there. I literally traced it down to the day. And I could tell, oh, these houses responded by sending in a paper form, you know, back in June or in March. And then these other houses came through online and I traced it down to the day. I could track them. I could also do that for Winnebago. That can be done for Winnebago moving forward. I would say probably, but we did have some really good success stories as well out of Washington state. In fact, you guys would be happy to know that the tribes of Washington state actually outpaced their general population as far as response rate, which I was just so excited to hear. And some of the strategies that they did is just what we're doing right now. Start early, get your leadership involved, get your executive officers involved. The types of stories that your education director should be saying in the community over the next 10 years is, hey, all sixth graders are going to do census day on April 1st. You're going to learn about how census impacts our community. Because guess what? In 10 years, those sixth graders are probably going to be 21 and they're going to be filling out a census. So it's starting early to train that. The Indian Health Service contact should be out in the community saying, all of our testing kits are based upon this, all of our vaccines are based on this. We need you to get involved. I've had some tribes, when they do per cap payments, as they're coming through to pick up their per cap checks, they had information in there about the census. So I think Garen did a phenomenal job of the outreach that he did. And we're here to make sure that we provide more resources for you guys moving forward. One of the other ideas that did come up is to maybe nominate an ambassador. I won't go so as far to volunteer, guarantee to do that, because that is a lot of work. But something to consider, an ambassador moving forward who remains a point of contact over the next 10 years, who is putting some of these things in motion. We do encourage tribal leadership to maybe appoint through a proclamation and office. Maybe it's your public information officer that's going to be the ambassador over the next 10 years. So we will definitely make sure that we follow up with Mr. Decora about the scheduling of that training to make sure that you guys start getting that training sooner rather than later.
Great. Thank you. Does the council have any more questions or feedback? Okay, with that, we thank you again for your presentation. Oh, we're Louis. We got Louis.
I was wondering how we could use census data to deal with the fact that farmers are leaving the county and Indians are coming back to the reservation. And how we can document that pattern to show the different growth rates of both communities? Because that has a big impact on how that census money is going to be distributed.
That is an excellent question, Mr. LaRose. Excellent question. And I like the way you're thinking. We literally just went through, in fact, right before this, we had an overlapping training about things like economic development and how this data is affecting economic development in Indian country. I mentioned to you guys, my introduction to the Winnebago tribe was almost a decade ago in working through the Indian chamber. So I have a soft spot when it comes to thinking about how funding and resources and economic development, how that's getting impacted by this data, which is why I came to work for the census, because I knew based upon the data, it wasn't as accurately reflected of what was really happening in Indian country. So left that to come here to help in that process of logistics, to make sure that we put our best foot forward to try to get an accurate reflection. So in response to your question there, Mr. LaRose, that will be part, and I'm going to make a note, in fact, when we do that data training for you guys, that we actually include some very special information specifically about migration and population migration. We'll also include some information about the census business builder, which will talk about different industries and you can narrow it down to agriculture and really look at how that's going to affect as well. So that when your economic development director starts working on things for their funding, they can extract that data and have those conversations about grant funding that's being allocated. And I just, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I just want to tell you a really interesting story. When I initially got assigned Texas to cover the Texas Dallas Fort Worth zone, I remember going down to Dallas and I looked around and I kept thinking, I don't think there really are that many tribes down here. There, it turns out there are three federally recognized tribes there. They are fairly small. So I couldn't really understand why they were getting such a significant chunk of federal funding and resources. Quite literally, when I walk into the Denver Indian Health and Family Services, the access of funding that they get here in Denver is maybe, I don't know, a fifth. I mean, it's a fraction of what is available to the one there in Dallas. The facility in Dallas that they own, they own that outright. If that facility was in Denver, that would be a $10 million facility, easy. And so it all goes back to census data. According to census data, if you rank all of the states, 1 to 50 of the most populated state of American Indians. Colorado is always in the top 20, but Texas is number four. And there's some really interesting information in there about those tribes of Oklahoma that are going down to that Dallas region, but also the Latino population that identifies as indigenous and how they're marking that on the census response. So it has a very real effect on federal resources that are reaching your community. And I can't wait to do that data summit training for you guys so you can start seeing how that data, you can extract that data on your own.
Great. Well, we are looking forward to that.
Lovely. And before we cut out today, is it, I always try to learn how to say thank you in the local tribal language. And if I remember correctly, I don't want to say it wrong, but I think it starts with a P. Is it pina giki? How do I say thank you in Ho'ang?
Pina gigi. Yeah.
Well, pina gigi, what an honor. Thank you, guys, and thank you again, Garen, for all of the work that you've done for your community. Stellar work. Thank you, Ms. Laura Lai, for your assistance. And thank you, Brandon Stout, for your help to join today. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, guys.
How do you say pina gigi in Puerto Rican?
Say gracias. The pina giki for you guys and gracias, it's for us.
Great. Well, we look forward to talking to you guys again. And it was a real good presentation and eye-opening. And I'm really challenged to do better. I want to get that 100% now.
You will. You will.
You will. You will. Thank you, Chairwoman Kitchen. Thank you.
Have a good day, ladies.
You too. Take care.
Bye. Our next agenda item is under old business. And it was to approve HR to work with the legal. It was a five signature under old, it's placed under five, excuse me. It was a failed five signature that is under old business. And the intention was to improve, to approve HR to work with legal to develop a resolution that helps encourage tribal employees to get the COVID-19 vaccination. And I just wanted to, well, it was put on the agenda, I think, for discussion and also that to assure John that some of the things that he wanted, we found that were already underway. And Alan's on the line? Alan, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And so I heard from Esther earlier and she had to step away. But the info that I did get was that the referral, regarding the referral to legal, was that the CFO, HR director, you know, already saw some of these things available under our current umbrella of services. And so in the meantime, we got a memorandum that was sent out to the tribal council and the staff this morning on our official organizational stance on the vaccine. Now, what I think Alan will speak more directly to is some of the things that I would say like the gist of it was trying to encourage vaccination and trying to really create more actions that would lead to wellness, that would lead to all the resources that the tribe has put in terms of public health initiatives and trying to fight the pandemic. And it seemed that making it, encouraging it to get the vaccine would be a kind of like a common sense thing to support as an organization. So I don't want to speak for anybody, but that was kind of what I got out of trying to accomplish this and looking at, could we offer incentives? And how could we fund something like that without resource? I think in the meantime, employees that are getting the vaccine were given administrative leave to go do their appointment. And so I just want to lay that out there and offer Alan some time to talk about what he's aware of within the organization and how we need to, I guess, find the disconnect or, I don't know. I'm just putting it back out there. That's what I know about it. It looks like we have some hands. So Alan, before I go to you, I want to hear from John, because this was actually John's email that started this discussion. So I'm going to give the floor to John.
Yeah, thank you. I did want to speak on it first since it was my initiative. Alan and Esther was in on that call because I brought it up in a pandemic task force meeting. And I actually asked the task force, say, do you want this to be a task force item that's going to be recommended to the council? And from there, he's like, well, we think that, John, you can do it for the council. And my main thing is the tribal council, the Winnebago tribe, us sitting around this table, we haven't voiced if we're encouraging this yet. And I think that needs to happen. I think that this is a whole campaign that needs to roll out, just like piggybacking off of the census. That was, you know, a lot of people had to get behind it for it to happen and for it to get momentum. So I think that it should come to a table, we do a resolution saying that, well, the Winnebago tribe is behind vaccination and we are encouraging our membership, our community members and our workforce. And I think it's going to be a number of things that come into play, whether it's incentives, you know, or even a campaign of making T-shirts that, you know, I got vaccinated for elders, I got vaccinated for our youth, you know. But because it's going to take a certain threshold of community members and workforce members to get vaccinated for it to even have an impact on this pandemic. So this is a very important part of this pandemic. And I think the council needs to come together and say that we're supporting this vaccination and that this is the tribe's plan moving forward with this pandemic. And we haven't done that yet. And the vaccination is becoming more readily available. I think I've heard March, that it's going to be available to anybody in a community that, for that. So that's what I wanted to do and I had my thoughts. The way I thought of this and wanted to push this forward as initiative, because it was offered to me. And I took the vaccination and I heard that the police department was about 50%. About 50% of them took it and 50% of them didn't, which is really alarming and concerning for them, because that's a really essential place, essential service. I was like, well, what's our plan? The council didn't say yet. And I think that needs to happen. And I think we need to have a path forward for employees and community members that do vaccinate. But also a path forward for employees and community members who choose not to vaccinate, because it is going to be their choice. But how do we fit that into our overall plan? So that's what I wanted to do and I think that's the really next step. And, you know, I was, of course, disappointed that it didn't get approved, because I think we're a little bit far behind, because this is being offered already and people are turning it down already. And we haven't came forward and said, this is our plan, you know, and we're supporting and encouraging everybody to take the vaccination. And, you know, really unfortunate that we've had back-to-back funerals of COVID-related deaths, you know. And so I think it's a real impactful time and a real time or opportunity for us to stand up and say, you know, we need support and we encourage vaccination. Thank you.
Thanks, John. We're going to hear from Thelma and then Louis had his hand up. And then we'll go back to you. We're going to hear from the council and then to Alan.
Sure.
Okay, my thoughts on this vaccination. I would like to leave that up to the people if they want to take it or not. I mean, we can't force anybody to be getting vaccinated. There's a lot of reasons as to why they don't want to. It's barely new. It's not really licensed yet. It wasn't approved for emergency. You know, so everyone kind of has their own reasons. I think a lot of them want to sit back and see how this, how it will turn out. Is it really effective? That type of thing. So and with what, he wanted to encourage people to do that. So I would suggest working with our health department, our health educator and getting incentives out for people who might want to take vaccination. I know a lot of people do that to get incentives. But that's just kind of my thought on it. Thank you.
And then again, I've never said force or mandate or anything, just to make that clear.
Thank you for those comments. Louis?
When I read that, I wasn't sure which way John was going. But I listened to the facts. This COVID-19 comes close to home. Last Saturday, I lost a dear friend, Terry Walters, to COVID-19. He was a good friend of mine. There are other relatives that have had it. And when you get 79 years old, you get pretty close to those dangerous charts. I get it. I can be gone in a, Terry lasted only a week. I want to know who those people are that refuse to take the test, because I don't want to be around them. I don't want them coming around me. I don't want them coming around me. I don't want them around my wife, my grandchildren, my family. Because I feel their protection. And we have to do, it's kind of late, but it's never too late. Because this pandemic may go on and on and on and on. As long as we got redneck cowboys refusing to take the test. It's a tough issue, but I've made up my mind. And I I'm concerned about Thelma. I listen to her. Because what she says, a lot of people hear. It's important to them. And for us to have half of our police officers not wanting to take the test. We'll get some more police officers. We don't need them. We got to protect this tribe. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Eric, and then Lorelai.
This this virus that's here, and we, a lot of our enrolled membership have contracted this virus up until this time. And our recovery numbers are outstanding. We've had hundreds of our enrolled membership. Majority of them, hundreds of them have seen it through and recovered. And it's just that, I think it's just now coming around to a more full effect. And it's reaching to places it hasn't got to yet. To our elders and the ones with those deep underlying conditions. It's finally coming around and getting into those little, little cracks where it hasn't gotten into over the last year. And so I do, I would like to see a lot of our membership get vaccinated. The ones that choose to get vaccinated, I understand that there's a lot of ones that don't, don't want to get or choose to not get vaccinated yet. Yet. And so what I said, I would encourage people to get vaccinated, but if they choose not to, then that's their decision. And we made it this far, 12 months during this pandemic. And so I think no matter how it goes, I think it'll be good. Because once another 30, 60, 90 days goes by and everything is okay with the people that have gotten vaccinated up until this point, the ones that haven't got vaccinated will choose to get vaccinated. And so again, I just encourage it, but if people don't want to do it, you know, I would say, keep your eyes open. And when it turns out to be good to choose to get vaccinated sooner than later. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Lorelai?
Madam Chair, I thought that our people needed more education about this vaccine. A lot of our people don't do social media. And so I thought, well, if we give them the education and they read it, then they can make their own decision. So I asked the 12 Clans Hospital to come up with a good old fashioned brochure that lists and everything you wanted to know about this vaccine. And the CEO at the 12 Clan sent that out, and I'm sure all the council members got it. I printed it out right away, and I took it out there to those COVID fighters in the lobby of the Black Hawk Center, asked them to offer them to people that are coming in to check their mail. And our CEO for the tribe asked Garen to send that same brochure out to all tribal employees. So they can get the facts about this vaccine before they make a decision. But I think what one misconception that's out there that some people have is the vaccine itself, it uses what's called messenger RNA. So you're not getting the vaccine, you're getting the instructions that go in your arm, go to your immune system, and tell your immune system how to make the antibody to protect you, the individual. That's what this vaccine does. But there's no science that tells us if you get vaccinated, if you can't still transmit it, spread it. And common sense tells you, when you breathe in, those air particles go in your nose if you're not wearing a mask. And I might have got vaccinated, and I'm not going to get sick, but I could turn around and cough and cough it right out on somebody else. So we need to understand that we're in this with wearing masks for the long run. No matter whether you get vaccinated or not. And they're telling us now that this virus, this COVID-19 virus, is mutating. So on the news, you hear about this variant, one's coming out of England, one's coming out of us. Africa, South Africa, viruses mutate. And while the scientists are saying, wow, this vaccine, there's no reason to believe that it won't work against this new variant. We don't know that. So we need to, those people that get educated, it should be their choice if they want to get the vaccine. But everybody still needs to wear a mask out in public to prevent transmission for our loved ones. And I went and got that vaccine. And I thought I was doing that because I was scared, but I thought I should do that because maybe there's somebody out there that saw me, I'm an old lady, I got it, maybe they'll try it. But they have a right to education about it before they go get it. And I don't believe in forcing anything down any tribal member's throats if they don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorelai. Thelma?
I was listening to the news and on this vaccination, it's good for a year. So come next year again, then it's just like the flu shot, then you have to take it again next year. And then in what Lorelai said too, I heard that on the news also, that even though you take the vaccine doesn't mean that, you know, you can't be a carrier and pass it on to other people. So those are two things, you know, that hopefully our people can understand that too. But I agree in that educational brochure that's going to go out that, like she said, people can read it, and then if they understand it more, then maybe they'll take the test. Thank you.
Thanks, Thelma. Did anybody want to make a comment before I turn it over to Alan? Coley?
Okay. As I said before, I was kind of on the fence on this, but after, after after last week and this week, I'm scheduled to take the vaccine January 20th. I will encourage my family to, when it's available for them. And today I will encourage tribal members to take the vaccine, those that are out there, and spread the word that those of us that are supporting this vaccine to take it. I think some of, I think some of us had learned the hard way that this is real. People were saying, talking fake news and stuff, and these numbers and stuff are wrong, are correct, incorrect. My family got the COVID. We were quarantined for 30 days. My wife and three of my daughters. I'm 99% sure I got it, but I didn't get tested. The nights that I did, thought I needed help, I couldn't go, I couldn't, I couldn't move to go get tested. It was just too much. And I mean, I took the blunt of it, maybe for my daughters. And, you know, say no names, and my son-in-law, I only got one good son-in-law. But I just kind of wanted to say that and say it out loud, that I am taking the vaccine, I'm scheduled to take it. And I kind of support it and encourage people to take it. And we'll see how it goes. But I understand, you know, your freedom, that you don't have to, your body, your spirit. Just for instance, how we talk with people, it's the smallpox, what was done to us, just as an example of your freedom, your past, your culture, which you believe in, and you are. And even how you are, you can get this when you interact contact with somebody. But again, I do encourage, and I do share this, anybody, anybody, everybody that's listening to this. I myself encourage it. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Coley. John, did you want to say something else? I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just really appreciate what Coley said, and I think that's all that I'm looking for. From the council as a table as a whole, to just that, you know, that we we encourage our tribal members and our workforce to, you know, that, we support that. And we haven't said that, we've been silent on it so far. And never did I say mandate or force down anybody's throat. And what I said, what I said from the beginning was choice, when people choose, you know, that's a real sacred thing that the Creator gave to us, our power of choice. And but these are uncertain times, so, you know, unprecedented times that we got to keep, continue to keep fighting. And even the comments about masks, you know, I think everybody understands that we might, nobody knows when we're going to be able to take off the masks. But then, but then we have masks, and we have social distancing. Now we have this vaccine that we have to keep fighting it with all those weapons. And that was just it, you know, Coley, Coley's words, that I would like to see that from the table as a whole. So our membership could see that, and so our workforce could see that. Because to this point, we've been silent, and if we choose to keep doing that, and I understand that the CEO and CFO are making efforts, and the hospital is making efforts over there. So I'm looking at the effort that's going to come from this table and that we can all get behind it. And it's going to be a campaign. I really agree with what Lorelai said about education, that could be part of the campaign. And Garen getting involved, that we really got to get behind this vaccine because that's the next tool that we have during this pandemic. And knowing that we can lose loved ones just like that real fast, you know, that's what's sad, and our people are hurting. So we got to step up as leaders. And that's what I believe, and that's what I want to do to get behind this vaccine and be the one voice from the table and saying that we support it and we encourage it.
Thank you, John, and thank you for the conversation, council. Thank you for, although this was a failed five signature, I don't think it was failed for out of support. I think it was failed out of misunderstanding and really trying to grasp what we were asking for. And from the discussion I heard today, you know, even those that opt out of taking the the vaccine, I think, also supports education and sharing information. So I still want to give Alan, well, Eric will hear from you, and then we'll turn it over to Alan. Because I want to, what we can, it doesn't have to be a five signature, we can do this education, we can work with Garen and our health educators in our public health department, you know, we have all the pieces. And, you know, I think what John wants to see is just something that says we support it, you know. We could, we could do a short little video. Garen's always encouraging us to do a little video. We could say, I got vaccinated, you know, when you vote, you get a little sticker that said, I voted. And so I hear what you're saying, John, about the campaign, about what we can do to be visible about it.
So I think I would really like to see a resolution from the council. You know, when we formed the task force, we really had to fight for that because it was something new, and we was like, well, how's it going to work? And we had to fight for it, and we achieved that, we formed that task force. Then when we wanted to do the curve, we fought for it, and people didn't think that it was going to be good. And we achieved a resolution. And then the masks, you know, before anybody around us was mandating masks, we did that. And we had to fight for it, and we asked our lawyers, how can we do it? How can we make the Dollar General do it? And how can we make it for? So I really see this as the next step, and I would really like to see a resolution from the council.
Okay, we don't have that resolution in front of us. Let's build that. We'll do that offline. Alan, or excuse me, Eric and Alan.
I think my last thing is our offer reservation and all the membership to have them included in this. And to be proactive and to say that we support, support this, to include them as well. You know, whether they're elders, children, a household that has a whole bunch of people inside there. You know, however, how we would go about it, but to include the offer of the nation enrolled personnel. And so, yeah, and if those shots are coming in, I don't know how many shots we have coming in of the if, hopefully, it's a whole bunch, so that way we can just do everybody, do everybody in the reservation. So, yeah, I'd just like to include the off reservation personnel on whatever we're doing.
Thank you, Eric. And they'll be working through different, different groups, like right now, they're with the essentials, non-essentials. Health have been done. Now they're moving into the seniors. And then, and so as they work through each of those groups, it'll become available. I've had some outreach from tribal members who are frontline workers, but not working in town that are looking to come home for it. So we'll, we'll keep our hand on that and work with our public health department so that we can put a blast out when that is available for them to make those appointments if they don't live in Winnebago. So thank you for that. Okay, Alan, without further ado, let us know what you know about this issue from the organization.
Sure, from the organization side. We've had an ad hoc committee that's made up of HR and myself and Esther and payroll and other managers, you know, we started out with reopening, and we've kind of morphed into coming up with our, what we, you know, the guidelines that we need to do. And we discussed this issue of the vaccine quite extensively. And we did bring Lorelai into our discussion so she could inform us, because I will, I will be the first to admit that from everything I was hearing from the news media and all that, that the, I thought the vaccine was kind of like the, you know, the vaccines that I got when I was a kid, you get it, you're done, you're cured, and you can't give it to anybody. Well, that's not the case. So what we decided as a group and, and as you saw in the memo, is one, to encourage our employees to be vaccinated. We reached out, we have access to a group called Benefits Comply through our health insurance, and we reached out to them to get some input on them for this vaccine. You know, we were talking, you know, mandated versing versus encouraging and, you know, incentivizing and that. And it came back to us, and I understand, you know, John, I'm, I'm just using this and letting everybody know that this was all of our discussions. You know, did we want to mandate for our employees versus did we want to encourage? And through all of the information that we came back with, we decided that the encouraging was the way to go to encourage our employees to be vaccinated. And then to further incentivize, I guess, is, and we didn't want to hurt their paycheck for them to take the time to go and get the vaccination. So that's why we decided to make sure that we're offering up to two hours of admin leave for those that choose, so that, you know, like people like me who are on salary, it's not going to affect my salary. But somebody who's an hourly employee, you know, if they, if we're saying, hey, you got to clock out and go to get your vaccination, it could hurt their pay. To get your vaccination, it could hurt their pay, their paycheck and we didn't want to do that, so that's why we went with to allow them up to two hours. Of um admin leave for each time, so that's up to four hours total for when they get the two vaccinations. To help give them that incentive to to go and to and give them that encouragement to go. One of the things that we had talked about, you know, when we were discussing our options. And one of the, one of the items that came back to us is if we mandated. Per federal law, we would have had to allow um exceptions for medical reasons. And or closely held religious beliefs. To comply with federal law, but if we encourage, then we can say, look, we encourage you to do it, but if you choose not to do it, that's your call. Um, we're not doing that, you know, we're we're trying to go the carrot versus the the stick. Um and and I think from a standpoint of um our employees, you know, yes, w- we as management. You know, are saying, hey, we encourage you, but I I think that having a voice from council saying. You know, we encourage people to have, to get the vaccine if they so choose, I think that would go a long way and then. The education component is huge, like I said, I was under a false pretense on the vaccine. Lorelei, thank you for that, you know, and and educated us to to tell us what the science is telling us. Because I'm not a scientist, I, you know, I don't know that stuff, so. That's, that's where as from an employee standpoint is we've gone with um encouraging. And allowing up to two hours each time they go. To get their vaccination for admin time, so it doesn't hurt their paycheck. I I know I went yesterday and got my first dose and from the time I got there until I was in the office was about an hour.
Okay, um well, Alan, thank you for that information, I think I I'm got a sense of where the council stands on this, so. Um since that five signature failed, I would like to ask for a motion to to draft a resolution. Um, I, how do I want to word that? To draft a, to launch, to draft a resolution, launching a COVID vaccine education campaign that um would include. Um encouragement to tribal members, employees and partners of the Winnebago tribe. And I say partners because there could be um be federal officers, there could be IPA employees at the. IHS facility, or excuse me, at our tribal health facility. So I I, we could wordsmith that, but I I would like to ask the council if they're willing to make that motion so we can capture um. Not duplicating efforts, but to uh stand together with those efforts. So, uh Lorelei?
Can you restate your motion? It was really long.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make a motion. I was just trying to um shepherd along our next step so that we can get a authority from the table to draft that resolution and capture. What we heard today's conversation and um pick up um where that failed five signature uh left off.
And and Tori, just from a a standpoint of an HR standpoint. The tribe currently has a contract with a, an HR attorney that we consult on HR issues. So if we um need to get anything from an HR standpoint, we owe. Our, all our HR department has to do is reach out to him at this point. Based on all the information, I don't um think that we need to reach out yet to an attorney. At least from an HR standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the, one of the reasons why, well, my my original five signature was to prove HR and legal to develop, develop that resolution. The health of the uh, the vaccine and the reason why I wanted the HR and uh. Legal to to work together on that is because I understand that there's employee rights and and HIPAA and. Be in line with all those things. Uh creating these paths for an employee to vaccinate versus an employee who chooses not to vaccinate and what's that, what that means. And actually, what what the rights are of somebody who chooses to vaccinate and. What Louis just comments were like, well, you know, I feel like I should have the right to know who doesn't vaccinate. So all those complex things, but that's what I wanted to approve and then in there also captured that the tribe. Is behind this vaccination, uh behind the vaccine and that we encourage that 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 voice is coming from the table.
So to move forward, what does the council want to do? Uh Rona, did you have a comment?
I just had a comment, um. What's the difference between just writing a memo of. Encouragement or memo that, you know, the tribal council, we all agree to it, you know, we pretty much agree to. Um endorsing this vaccine, why do we have to have a resolution to just simply say that?
I think, I think a resolution and and working legal leaves it open to if there's any changes that we actually have to make. When in terms of.
Endorsing the vaccine, that's all we're doing, do we have to have a resolution? To do that, can't we just draft a letter or a memo and we all sign it and send it in the mail or post it on Facebook? That's all, that's that's just all I'm wondering is, you know, I I I encourage it, I want to encourage it. But I think, you know, just involving legal and HR issues, whatever, you know. We're all on the same page that, yes, we should get it, but you don't have to get it if you don't want to.
I think um during the, during the task force meeting, um Lance had had some comments about. That he was actually going to do some legal research on us and that a resolution would be the smartest way to go to get developed. And uh there was, there was lengthy, I I wish that the task force would have made this a recommendation to the council. Um so it adds some more momentum, some more people behind it. But uh, but that, I mean, with without action, that pretty much was the consensus of the task force. And they were, they just pretty much left it up to me to, to initiate that as a council member. So I I understand that this is complex and wrap your mind around it, but um. So I guess that, I just wanted to, everybody to know that.
Uh Eric, thanks, John.
Yes, um. It 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 sounded like um Councilman Snowball was talking about. Being able to bypass HIPAA laws on what Councilman LaRosa had said of knowing who. Got it, who didn't, these HIPAA laws are 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 pretty uh important and we we dealt with this. The he, these HIPAA laws in the past and it was emphasized the importance. Of these, to follow these HIPAA laws. And uh, that was one of the big things a few months ago and to hear that. Now that the tribal council is going to be able to do a resolution and bypass them, that uh. If that's going to be the case, you know, I I'd kind of like, like it to be known that this is going to set a precedence for that. And for anything coming down the future. And if those are federal guidelines and we're going to be able to bypass them at the, at the table. To to just let that be known, that's that's the only thing that I would like to say on those HIPAA laws, so.
Again, I didn't, I didn't mention bypassing HIPAA laws, I said making sure that we're in line with them.
Okay, thank you.
Um so, um John, you know, you, you showed your leadership and bringing this to the table, do you want to make a motion and see? Um if you can capture what you want to do, I think there's some hesitancy with the resolution, but. I, you know, the table, the, I guess the floor is open on how you want to push this. I think I hear support, I hear some that say we could probably just do um a memo. A letter to the people, but I I do understand your, your feeling that a resolution is more compelling and also. Um holds um the authority of the tribe, so um.
Yeah, I think I I've actually heard a lot of good feedback from the council too, as well as the, that I didn't. I wasn't thinking of because that I really value everybody's thoughts and and that we, we can get all those thoughts together. That fully encompasses what we want to do, so I think a a motion to. For a resolution to be developed on a a COVID nineteen vaccination campaign. So I think if we use the word campaign, that would fully encompass the education and the tribal organization. And the, what the council's voice is on this vaccination.
Is, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there uh, Laurel, are you second and are you waiting for discussion?
No, I'm, I'm trying to find out what exactly his motion is saying.
Okay, John, can you restate your motion, please?
Yes, for uh to prove for, to prove uh for a resolution to be developed. For a COVID nineteen vaccination campaign, I think that would fully encompass what what the resolution would all need. Because I think we really do need a campaign that has education. All those things that would capture all the council's uh thoughts as well.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Coley. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Six, uh motion carried six zero zero or seven zero zero, excuse me, two four six seven zero zero. Okay, uh thank you, Council, for the conversation and we'll, we'll get a draft to you and we'll work that draft, you know, I want this to be. What we need it to be and I want to make sure everyone's voice is heard, you know, whichever way you, you know, support this vaccine, you know, we want to provide education, so. We'll definitely get that going and um make sure your voice is included. Oh, excuse me, our, so we. Motion and second discussion, um is there any, I asked for objections to the motion, there was no objections. You object to the motion, Louis? So if there are no objections, um motion carried, Lorelei, you object?
No, I'm still trying to understand the motion. Sorry, but he, he said, make some motion for a resolution to be developed on a COVID nineteen. Vaccination campaign. But I didn't hear anything like education vaccination campaign.
I think um there's a lot of different elements that they're going to be captured within that and one's education, one's what it means to the organization. Um also to the entities and also what what the council's voice is, so I think there's going to be. A lot of different parts to that campaign and uh, like I said, this is just to develop it, this isn't no approval. Um we're all going to have the chance to look at it and add to it and and to say if we don't agree with anything, but I think we need to start that process.
What I was getting at is we have the resolution, then we have a. Explanation for our support for the resolution that all of us could sign. That would be separate than a resolution. But it was so our support. People taking a shot, it's not mandatory, you can explain that too. But it has an addendum to the newsletter, Lorelei was talking about the twelve clients. They're just giving out information to more information. Because. There's two different types of vaccine that were administered to twelve clients, not just one.
So we'll make sure that that's all outlined in that, Louis, and that these documents complement each other, you know, there was some education put out. We need to make sure that that's, that we're not duplicating but just complementing and bringing together, I. I I have a stronger grasp of what you're asking for, John, and I will communicate that, uh Lorelei.
I want to know if John's going to help write this. Resolution.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely play a, play a part in it.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, if uh Madam Chair sets up a meeting, I would, I would definitely like to be included.
Okay, so we, this motion passed, um thank you, Council, for the conversation. Our, our last agenda item, which is uh just as important and along the same um topic. Is our wake and burial program COVID nineteen protocol, uh Secretary DeCora has been very instrumental and vocal about. Um the need to make accommodations for our relatives that are mourning and. Um the Ho-Chunk Center was recently, as you all know, um had some repairs and. Um we're looking to modify this policy so that it speaks to um the needs of our, our families that are, are use that facility. So um it's in your packet, Robin had input, it was also emailed out to the tribal council. Um this has been an ongoing conversation, so I'd like to turn the floor over to Lorelei because she's had some, some thoughts and some good ideas surrounding this topic.
Okay, uh. We. Looked at the old policy or protocol that was initially um written back when the pandemic started. And at that time, we didn't know a lot about this virus. But now we know more about this virus. And in working with uh Mona Sepante from our public health. Department and with Robin. Is Robin here? Is Robin, she was going to be on this call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Um, we have this version here, but Robin's also here to answer your questions, but this is. Revised uh policy that. He submitted with all that input, go ahead, Robin.
I don't have the policy right here in front of me, but you have that copy. I'm here at home right now with my grandson, so I don't have that copy with me right now, but the only changes. You oh, we want, you guys wanted to open it up, so we opened it up. And with the funerals, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna tell you what happened with the things that I saw out there. And then um with the funerals that we had this past week out here, um. There were several people weren't wearing a mask and I literally took a handful of masks around and told them, put them on. And in my protocol before, I had on air, I believe I had on air, if they weren't going to wear their mask, I've been asked them to leave. You know, whether they're family or not, I'm just trying to keep everybody safe. But um I didn't do that, and and that's, if you read the old protocol. You'll see why people didn't want to use the building, there, it was stripped and. I hate to say it, but I'm, I'm. I'm looking to see a bunch of cases coming up because of these funerals like that and people not adhering to it. It's not my job to do that, to push that, it's the people, people's choice, they're the ones that need to adhere to that. And the food and everything, cooking the food and everything, they were pretty good about that, clean, you know, wearing gloves and. Everything and, I mean, it can, it can work, it's just the people that need to, who's being ignorant and. Like you said, that education, which you were just talking about, goes along with that, the more they're educated, the more they know, the better they'll be at. Following rules, so um whatever Lorelei wrote and the just the. The new protocol, I'm, I'm agreeable with it. So if you have any questions, I mean, I don't know if you all got copies of that, did you send them out, Lorelei?
It, it's in the packet, Robin.
Yes, Robin, they're in the packet, everybody has them.
So if they have any questions, I'm, I'm here, or whatever, you know.
Um first, Robin, I just want to say thank you, um we're always thankful when you and. Your son are there at a moment's notice to help. your son are there at a moment's notice to help the families and often it's, um, on the weekends that these things happen or late at night and anytime our families are in distress, you're there and I, I don't think, um, I don't know if we say thank you enough. Um, understandably, these guidelines, um, have been flexible and as we learn more about this virus and how we put in things, um, I think the masks are, that I appreciate you gently pushing the family in that direction because we all have to be responsible for ourselves and, and wash our hands and be doing all those things. But I think the biggest thing that changed in here was the food, and so I'm really happy to hear that, um, the cooks were wearing gloves and masks and, and I thought that they did a really good job, um, the time that I was out in around the ways. Um, does the council have any feedback or is this ready for approval? Uh, Eric?
Yes, I would like to say thank you, as it's already been said. I would say thank you, Robin, for, uh, all the work you've been doing, as, as it's been said, even your son, helping other families, just like to repeat that. And, uh, I'm happy to see that this, uh, Ho-Chunk Center is open again because it, it beats being in a small house, as, as, as we know, a lot of these families have been, even, even large families, just as one that, uh, that, that, that caused it to reopen here, we had larger families than that stuck in a house, stuck in the Veterans Building. And so it was good to see that the whole Chunk Center is now open to accommodate our people. And so I'd like to, now that it's open, I'd like to see it stay open to accommodate every task member that it can, anyone that, that, that seems to, that, that passes on can, can go there. And so, again, like to say thank you for all your due diligence and hard work, thank you.
Thanks, Eric, Thelma.
Changes are in the red, Laureli?
Those were recommendations from the Public Health Department. And then Robin added.
Okay, and. Okay, so where I see it says, um, as long as everyone is wearing their mask, instead of staying, saying that, it should say mandatory to wear a mask. That, that's the only change I would like to see on it.
I do have that posted on the doors too, no entrance, no mask, no entrance, but, you know. And the other thing is, I don't know, is it on air, Laureli? I, I do not want children under sixteen out there, I just feel that they're more likely to catch it, you know, or whatever, contract COVID than the older ones, but that's just one thing I had on air. And the other thing that I would like to ask is, do we just do funerals? I have someone calling about a wedding and I had someone calling about a memorial dinner. And I'm not really up to having other events right now with this, you know, and it's just a precaution. But, uh, that wedding was scheduled last year, so I don't know if we need to let them go ahead with it or what, but I just want, you know, and I just got a call today about a memorial dinner, so, but I told her, no, we're not opening it, so, I don't know, that's, I need guidance in that, that area.
Okay, um, so to, um, capture Thelma's comment in the third to last paragraph, um, we can change that as long as everyone to, it is mandatory to wear the mask. To, Robin, to your point, that is in there in the one, two, three, four, fifth to bottom paragraph, it says no one under sixteen years of age will be allowed. And, you know, these are the guidelines, but as Robin stated, the family is gonna have to police themselves, you know, Robin isn't gonna be out there during the whole wake time, but these are the standards that we'd like, um, upheld and that is understood by the family and, and the, um, spiritual leader that's in charge of, of that service, that they also understand these. Robin, when the family meets with you, do they get a copy of these guidelines?
I got them posted on a door, but when they're, I can give it to them. I always, I tell them everything, I go over everything with them and whatnot, but I don't give them a copy of that.
One more question, um, what was it? I forgot, I'll, I'll think of it, Rona, Rona had a comment.
I said, yeah, there's, um, when you walk in a door, you know, the, the signs are on the doors, I've seen all of that and there was a lot of people, um, when I went yesterday that, that weren't wearing masks. Um, and it's kind of like, kind of discouraging to me, you know, that they, they want to use this facility, but they don't want to follow the rules. It's just for the protection of, it's just for the protection of everybody and, um, it's, you know, and so here we do, we open up this community center for them to use, but then they don't follow the rules. You know, what, what are the consequences? I mean, not really consequences, but, you know, like Robin said, you know, are we gonna have another outbreak here? You know, more people getting sick? Because she wasn't there the whole time and I was only there, you know, for a couple hours yesterday. And there was kids. And there was kids and people not wearing masks. How do we protect our community and our people if people aren't following the rules?
That's what I, that's the biggest thing, I mean, people, that's why they didn't want to use my building because of the rules. Because of the strict rules I had in place. So kind of got a little bit lenient, they still don't follow the rules. And the other, there's one more thing here, and I just got a memo today from Alan, or Eric and Alan saying they were gonna put a kiosk, one of those temperature kiosks out there at the parking lot doors because ours was broken when it was vandalized, when it was broken into. So they had an extra one that they bring that out, but I need one of those at, at the other key doors. And there's, and Erica saying no to block that out, I can't do that, that's a fire hazard. And people use that side door, the first side door to haul in groceries. The other ones where we bring the casket in all the time, so there needs to be one at each entrance. Now, do we have to have security out there during a funeral? I don't want to do that, that's not.
Very nice. Um, one thing that we could ask, you know, just like there are, you know, there's different ones that take care of things, maybe we ask the family to designate somebody to, to monitor the door. I mean, it really is coming down to the family and it, they want to keep it safe and so they have a, a stake in upholding this policy, um. So that's, that's just a suggestion that just like they appoint somebody to watch the fire, they appoint somebody to, you know, say the prayer. You know, that they maybe at every meal, they appoint somebody to watch that door, so that, I'm just thinking out loud. But before we move on to John's comment, um, I remembered my point. Um, earlier this fall, we said to just take care of funerals and we weren't doing B-Day's weddings or memorials at that time. And so I guess, um, the floor is open to the council if you want to maintain that, those gatherings to just funerals, or if you want to give Robin, um, guidance to open up to broader doings. Oh, oh my God, oh, okay. Um, so hold on, hold on for a second. Um, oh, so the floor is open, I just need to check on something real quick. Um, Eric, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, um, I would, I would be open to opening up to, uh, memorial meals, at least, at least go that far, we, we have the vaccination coming out. And so I would like to, uh.
What about birthdays and dances and like I said, weddings?
I see no one under sixteen years of age will be allowed, I see that really as a tough one and are people really gonna, you know them, you know how they are.
I realize that, that a lot of our, the families, there are a lot of children, like this last year, there was a lot of children. But like I said, it's up to them, they want to protect their children, then they'll, they'll follow the rules. We shouldn't have to, geez, we shouldn't have to police a funeral.
Yeah, understandable, Laureli?
Um, I think that we should continue with, uh, no social gatherings. Because we just are burying our people like one right after the other. And families are suffering, grieving. And there's, should be no reason why we, we're gonna open up to social gatherings during this pandemic that's affecting our tribe, our people. So I, I would be opposed to social gatherings in the, in the Black Hawk Center, it should be there for people that have a loved one they lost that they want to bring home. And if they follow the guidelines. And I don't have a problem with families that want to have a memorial dinner, but they have to socially distance, they have to wear a mask. It's not a place for social gatherings at this time with this pandemic that's killing us, killing our Winnebago people. So those are just my own thoughts, is, is habit for our families to bring their loved one home, that our people need to enforce that, wearing masks. And it's out of love for each other, who else do we want to get sick and die on us and be buried? And, uh, so that, I'm opposed to social gatherings, but I'm okay with socially distanced dinners where they're honoring the loved one, a, a loved, a loved one that passed away a few years ago or whichever memorial it is. We know how to social distance. And we gotta ask our people to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma.
I too would just like to see it open for the memorials and for the funerals. And in, in doing that, we'll be able to see if they are following these mandated orders of wearing a mask and distancing. Um, and if it comes to it where they are not doing it, then I would like to see maybe security come in. I mean, if they can't do it, then maybe they do have to have someone there.
Understandable.
Okay. All right, um, with that, so, um, just wakes and memorial, sounds like Robin.
Okay, cause when that building was, sorry, when that building was originally, what it was intended for was for like mortuary, for the funerals, for memorial dinners, it wasn't intended for all kinds of other events, but eventually that's what happened. It's with, uh, I don't know, a sacred place to take our loved ones, you know, after, when they die, so that, that's my view anyway.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone, for the feedback, is there a motion to approve these, these protocols as revised to include mandatory mask wearing?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Thelma, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Second, we have a second from Laureli. Discussion.
I have a question, wasn't there a resolution done that they had to wear masks in tribal facilities anyway?
Yes, yes, there was, and I, if I recall, those, there was postings around town, um, with that resolution and, um, I don't know if communications did those or what, but it had the resolution, had a nice picture on there.
I made my own.
So yes, yes, it is, there is a standing resolution, so any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried seven zero zero. Um, council, that brings us to the end of our agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Eric, do you want to second that, Rona?
Yeah.
We have a motion to adjourn, um, at three forty-eight. Any discussion? Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero, we are adjourned. Thank you to all our presenters today, our council, and of course, our IT team who keeps us, uh, connected and on stream, so have a good day, everyone. Um, be careful, tomorrow, the tribal organization is watching the weather and we're monitoring the storm. So please watch out for any delays or closures, um, that might impact, um, programs or services, um, on the tribal organization. Thank you, stay safe.
You're clear.
Okay, thank you, everybody, have a good evening, hey, before, if anyone's still on, anybody on still? Crap, okay.